But you can have that with any department. We can compare treasurers or the amount of times you've called, illegal versus Rosemary called. I don't get the analysis of what made you bring that about in comparison. I mean, you know, it was a board vote to change it. You got, yeah, you put this page in there. If everything was a constant, I can understand the analysis, but nothing's a constant. There's, nothing's a constant with the two different firms. Each firm, if they were present at this time, could have the same number. You know, we know the constant, which is just a different dollar amount, but as far as what's going on is not a constant. Who's calling them? What's going on legally? That's not a constant. I don't know if it's worth your effort to continue on this page, given that we had an analysis by an auditor, what they thought. You know, that's, that's something that's tangible, but this, I don't know how tangible this is, other than you point out a figure of what something costs last year and this year. The data is not constant to be even compared. It's not the same stuff going on or the same people making the calls. Things have changed. Things will change. So I don't get the effort put into page 13.
Would you like it taken out?
I just don't understand why it's in, because it just doesn't make, other than if you're trying to compare what something cost last year or this year, but it's not really, the only analysis is the dollar or not. I don't know amount of time you're putting in it versus not, but any of the major legal things that are going on, they're going to go on regardless of what firms here. We do know what one firm costs versus another or what could potentially cost in the future, but then again, I mean, there's lots of people talking to the attorney that I see in Philly that are generating these numbers as well, which is clearly so documented in what's going on in this analysis. So, yeah, I would, I don't get, I mean, at the end of the year, we could say, hey, this is what cost in legal. Are there any things, things that we can do to lower the number? And one thing you do see happening this year is we're letting the solicitor go early. The solicitor's not sitting here throughout the whole meeting, so we are making changes to save legal, but I don't get the purpose of the effort on your part for that page.
The one thing I do like is the bottom part where it breaks it, and maybe that's to a point where maybe there needs to be more there or something, but to see what legal fees we have for the different projects.
Sure.
I think, you know, that shows us, and maybe if there can be a, you know, running total for the year for each of those lines, you know, something like that, maybe that's more useful.
Useful.
Because then it's, you know, not just for us, but for the public to be able to see, okay, we spent forty-six thousand in legal fees this year. Okay, well, you know, fifteen thousand of that was the teamster bargaining. Okay, we won't have that next year.
It breaks it down.
Manchester Farms, you know, we did this much, you know, blah, blah, we did this much, all that. So I like that kind of idea, so maybe not so much what's on top, but the bottom half of it, if that makes more sense, is more worth the time. I mean, I would throw in a running total for the year on the lines. I know it's kind of odd spacing to do, but.
I can figure it out.
You know, that would be more useful, then we can see, okay, you know, we spent a lot this year on such and such. But, you know, I like that break, personally.
Yeah, it breaks the fees down as far as where the money's going.
And that gives better, that's good.
In the, in the payment authorization section, the one items from the bill are now spelled out, whereas previously it was lumped out.
Right.
There's so many different topics that I.
Right.
Can't break it further.
Yeah, maybe more, just more generic ones, but, you know, some of them are, you know, that's, it's good to see, especially the, you know, the land development projects and, you know, any bargaining we have to do and things of that nature. It's, I do like seeing that, so it's a good breakdown of where our legal fees went.
Mr. Rhodes?
In reference to the legal fees, I agree with you if it deals with the development and so on, but the fact that residents, say Buddy Rhodes or anybody else calling up, every time you call a lawyer, that little clock clicks and it calls money. He's not a township manager, right? We're supposed to hire people that are certified in certain field, like road crew, you have a gentleman that is certified in road work. You have a gentleman's certified with police work. You have a secretary and, and I guess office manager. And like, we used to have a township manager, you know, and I looked at some of the calls back then, you know, but when we did have a township manager full-time, right? There weren't as many calls to the solicitor at that time as there are now. I've been looking at some of the budget items and I just feel we have to, you know, that's the reason why it went with different, we had different, we, we bid out. Basically, one time, I remember we had eight different lawyers, you know, put their application in there. And, and I'll just say, some political thing got in it and we went back with the same firm. He dropped down five dollars or something like that. But basically, that's what we get. We want, we have a, I feel a great lawyer now that had been addressing most of our problems, but at the same time, as a township, we can't be calling him up all the time and expect to him to give us answers with not no costs. And by looking at that budget, you can see that some of the costs has been going up for whatever reason. And I think it deals a lot with conversation between either the board or the office people, you know, calling up. I don't, you know, I know the police department would call the district attorney if he has any problems. He wouldn't be calling the solicitor. The zoning officer might be calling the solicitor for a zoning issue, but other than that, we, we do have to keep control of our budget. That's the reason why we went up a mill or whatever we're charging the residents now. And if you don't keep up with the budget now, we're going to be going back to the township and saying, I don't care if you're on set income or not, that's going to cost you more, all right? And you're at, there, and same with the school board. So I want the supervisors to keep address. I think you already addressed some of the night staff, and I just went Carol and Ed and Mr. Lamb and whoever the new person's going to be that addressed the budget issue, because that's coming up. I know from the last meeting, I was down Jacksonville, and I usually been to every budget meeting. And it was comment made, I heard from the grape line, oh, nobody shows up. Well, sometimes if you, some people show up and just like it was stated by, if I'm a chairman or something, every person in this room has a right to speak. That's what freedom of speech is, all right? For anybody and any department to put down any resident for their abuse is unbecoming of a township and uncom- of freedom of speech. Now, if I attack Steve personally, that's something that you should address. You don't attack any supervisor or attack any particular resident in here, but at the same time, it doesn't give you free rein as a chairman. Buddy Rhodes was the chairman at the time, give me free rein to saying that whatever I say doesn't mean nothing, all right? I've been, I'll tell you the truth, one thing kind of irritated me tonight. Six years I was a supervisor, I didn't miss a planning commission for six years. I went to every one of them, all right? And that's something the supervisor has to address yourself, your time and stuff like that. But I've been involved in the planning commission. Matter of fact, when we had the plan, we had Durbin one, Durbin two, Durbin three. We had big development in the township back then. Now it's almost down to nothing, only a couple of building permits and nothing in the, in the box for new construction. So that's the reason why some people just felt waste of time. I know some people have been on there for fifteen and twenty years, Jim Durbin, I have to know him personally. So people do kind of get tired to come to meeting and nothing's going on. All right, thank you for giving me the time to speak, but I just want you to realize that every resident out here is concerned by township and the budget and everybody has, they're not a personal agenda. We want for what's best for the township, and I think each one of supervisors still, but we cannot let special interest groups interfere with the decisions. And I happen to know that happens in a lot of governments, special interest groups, big labor, a lot of things. I know, because I was big labor. So they do use a lot of funds that influence supervisors or city council. Thank you.
Mr. Scott?
On that issue regarding calling the solicitor, what is the policy? Any, any township employee official can call and residents?
The residents cannot, no. Generally, it's through the board or through the chairman, if the board is clear on that, or if the office needs to, they usually clear it with the board just to make sure, or any of the go and bay type stuff that they need, you know, that can't be, that needs to be addressed before a public meeting or to get ready for a public meeting.
So I understand it correct? Township employees and or, well, township employees, any township employees and members or the head of the member of a commission, say park or?
No, generally not. They generally come to us and ask for, you know, some time there, as the planning commission has done. For some legal time as well, so. It's mostly the office staff and the board that communicates with the solicitor.
Office staff and board. Okay, so then whoever the office staff has a problem, they go to the township chairman?
Generally, emails go out as far as that goes. I mean, we do give some leniency to them to be able to, to work with Mike on certain issues. So if it's relating to a certain issue that we've been working on, obviously they can go back and forth, or if Mike reaches out to them with something, but generally.
Well, there's no set policy or rule that they put it in writing, send it to the chairman first, and would copy the entire board? That's what I would like to see happen. That way, no board member is left out of the loop. Your vote, the board's vote pays the bills, so I feel you should be in the know. I feel township employees or office staff should communicate in writing first to the chair and carbon cop- and copy the board stating, I request to communicate with a lawyer regarding this and so.
In general, that's what I've been seeing, is that we get emails to the board from the office staff asking for it.
And then planning commission and or any other board, I think they should publicly come here, ask them right here.
And they have, well, they, yeah, they have. Some of it is, you know, like the planning commission was looking for more in-depth knowledge to do than is in a normal public meeting as far as the board of supervisor meeting.
I can't imagine them having to acquire any more in-depth knowledge. I feel they should come to this meeting and address it where the public can hear it.
And a lot of times they do. A lot of times they do.
Well, I feel all times. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Steve, I just wanted to comment. I noticed, I noticed we're a half year in the, as far as the full-time officer salaries and wages, you have thirty-seven percent. So you're coming under, here you'd be at fifty percent. That's creating the contract over time, you have forty-one percent, so some definite savings, you know, from right here.
Well, that's because one last question. All those in favor? Aye. Question carries three zero. I make a motion to approve the June twenty sixteen payment authorizations for sixty-six, ninety-six checks, excuse me, in the aggregate amount of one hundred and five thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-one cents for the period of June twenty-nine, two thousand and sixteen, and July twenty-six, two thousand and sixteen. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Question carries three zero. We have writs of execution here from Portnall for two properties regarding delinquency and trash payments. So I'll make a motion to sign the writs of execution as presented. Second. Questions or comments?
What would you say? I didn't hear you, sir.
There's writs of execution for collections against trash penalty payments for going back many years.
Have either of these owners ever contacted Township Building that they're guarding from or a lot of years, a month?
They typically deal directly with Portnall.
Yeah, once it goes to Portnall. Yeah, I was just wondering if they were trying to, we've seen that before, coming, figuring what's going on.
A question in reference to the trash issue. I call it King Can Alley. You can call it what you want, but when you go across, when you get down to Modena, where the bar is on the corner is all blocked up, you make a right, it's a little bridge, that's called King Can Alley. I used to go in the East File Field one time. We have five homes back there, I think one, two, I think five or six, that I want to know if they're paying their trash bill to East File Field, because at one time, South Coastal was picking up, and our trash guy said their truck was too big to go up that road and pick and turn around to get the five resident or six resident that we have in East File Field. You know, Modena goes in the East File Field, but Modena used to be East File Field. But in reference to that, there's five residents up there that should be paying taxes to East File Field trash pickup. We're picking up one trash guy right down at Half Acres, and that's right down below my cousin Mimi Bobkins. They're only first house in Modena, all right? That's a line there. Our trash truck's been picking that trash up, all right? So I want to know if the Lindsay who's now is picking up, I think Lindsay's picking up Modena's trash now, South Coastal doesn't do it anymore.
Deems, deems this real.
Yeah, well, Lindsay, I seen their truck run up and down it. It might be like West County had three different contractors, but in reference to that, there's five people up there. I want to know if the board knows, because the board okayed it, not, I don't think you three did, but the board okayed that, and Tag knows all about it too.
That's correct.
All right? But there's five people up there, and I want to hand, or whoever's in charge of our trash bill, see if those five residents are paying trash bills in there, because I, I go up there. There's sort of a few cans sit down, because the one driveway goes up and there's two houses up there. So they do bring their cans down, and everybody has their can in that little cul-de-sac, all right?
If we get the addresses, perhaps they can just reach out to the.
Pardon?
If we get the addresses, perhaps they can reach out to the trash company and just see, or the billing company, billing company, I guess.
Who are we billing, you know?
Right. We can see if the billing's being done, but I can't say one way.
Well, you're going to have to, evidently whoever these other people are, and I don't need to know, that you're going to have to pass, you know, bills. What about these people? Maybe they hadn't been paying. Maybe they hadn't been paying East File Field. I don't know that, but if that's the case, who are they paying, all right? And why are we picking up other residents, five versus one? You know, that's not even a good odds right there. I mean, basically, that's Modena, and that's East File Field. We didn't contract Modena's trash picker to pick up East File Field, and vice versa, we didn't do theirs to pick up East File Field. So I definitely want that to be looked at, and I want that to be part of the minutes. Thank you.
Is, what, that's, that's been, been going on for almost probably, I don't know, maybe almost twenty years? Those five people back in there, they do pay East File Field Township for their trash pickup.
They pick up.
But at one time.
Who did it, man? I didn't hear it.
East File Field, he said. Those five people back there, buddy, they do pay East File Field Township.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
We, we pick up, our trash haul picks up one for the, for us.
At Half Acres.
Half Acres. Half Acres pays Modena, but that's been set up for, I don't know.
It hasn't been twenty years. I know for a fact it hasn't been twenty years, but I know.
Buddy, can you give Tag a chance to talk?
Yeah, well, I'm just telling you, I know Phillips went up there.
Okay, well, he didn't interrupt you. Could you run it in?
Well, anyways.
He's giving false information.
It's been set up, I know, I worked over in, in South Coastal in two nineteen ninety-five. You want me to speak, buddy, or no?
Buddy, can you let him finish?
I mean, can't you do?
Go ahead, Tag, please.
There's five people that live up there and they do pay the township of East File Field. The only reason why we didn't want our trucks going up there was because the way the road was up there, it's already tore up, and if you get another trash truck going up there. So we had five residents up there. At one time, we had another resident on Upper Gap Road that they used to pick up too, but that house is gone now. So we, we used, it used to be pretty fair, but now, if we want to, we'll, we'll get trash cans and we'll take them up there and we'll get our trash hauler up there. But Modena was okay with it, and it never had a problem with. We just had the same problem in Cowan Township on Reed Street. Reed Street on one side belongs to East File Field, the other side belongs to Cowan. So what they did, all these years, we're picking up both sides of the trash, because they didn't want a big truck going up there picking. Now we got two of our trucks going up there, and we got two of Cowan's trucks going up there, and, and the road is already messed up. And some of the people were already ticked off because it happened, but now our trash hauler has to go back there and pick it up. But if, if, if that's what the board would like, we'll take five new trash cans and recycle cans, and we'll get our trash hauler to go up there and pick it up. It's not, it's not a problem. However you want to do it, it's been like that for a long time.
Thank you. In reference to Reed Street, it used to be a group pound on the, on that one side. I'll tell you that now. It was a group pound, all right? And I know you don't plow half the road, and Cowan don't come up and plow the other half. The road is not even real wide. It's not even certified as a state road. So I do know Reed Street. That Reed Street's been there long before Buddy Rhodes, all right? Okay, but I tell you right now, you don't plow that road. Cowan Township plows most of the time.
That's correct, they do.
And that trash truck backs up there. That trash truck is no different than certain, their big truck, salt truck loaded down. It all depends how much trash they have in it.
That trash truck, about eighty thousand pounds.
Now, I, now, I, I travel, I drove West, West Cowan, I mean, West, Universal West Trust, and trash, big trash trucks, ten, ten wheeler, haul nine tons.
Eighty thousand pounds.
I know what they haul.
Eighty, eighty-one pounds.
And, and a, and a, and a salt truck can haul up to eight tons of salt, all right? So there's no difference. So don't tell me that the trash truck versus a township, eight tons salt with a plow, you know? And that road is not level. It kind of boughs a little, it got a little curve for drainage. So that there is not even comparing apples with apples. The main thing I was concerned about is the resident, and it hasn't been twenty years, because I know none of you four was on board, and I know the board member was on there, all right? The pizza man was one of them, all right? And, and the other gentleman went to New York, and that's when that was done, all right? That's when they started to make the change, because South Coastal was doing the trash pickup at one time.
That's in the early two thousand.
I do know something, but it doesn't go back twenty years, Tag.
It goes back to two thousand, bud.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's not twenty years.
Does, does the board want us to take trash cans to those people and we'll get our trash hauler?
If they're, if they're paying already, then I think it's fine to me, but.
Well, then, then therefore, the people that you're going to cite, and I know some of the places that don't even have trust cans, that people are being cited, don't even have trash cans out there, all right? So therefore, what you're saying, those people can, don't have to pay for the trash can, you know, and have East File Field trash can. They can have whatever trash can people have in Modena. I don't know, the Half Acres, I didn't notice, you know, if they have East File Field trash cans or not. I know you guys stop there a lot. They must have a business there.
Well, you have to stop at Half Acres and get their trash cans.
Yeah, because I see our township truck stops there a lot. So I don't know what it's in reference to.
I don't either.
Mr. Scott?
Yes, thank you. Signing of writs of execution, I would like to see the minutes state that it's for what trash, past due trash bills? Is that what the writ of?
Yes.
Well, that would be good to have. That would be.
I did see that before making the motion.
Okay, well, it's not written on the, so I, I wonder what's going to be in the minutes, but I would hope that the minutes reflect that the writ of execution is for trash bills.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Question carries three zero. Township business, Connie?
Been working on the document scanning project that is taking all the documents in our archive room, which is all the property folders, all the financial folders, all of the development folders, as well as whatever is in this room and upstairs in, I don't know what you want to call it, in the loft area. There are three different proposals. I am working with Laserfish Cloud Solution to get an updated proposal. When they first estimated, a company thought it would be five hundred thousand pages. The last company thought it would be around three hundred and seventy. I've been trying to get them to update for it, but I need the board to also help go through these. They're, they're more complex.
Are they basing it on, like, coming out of a can? Or they, what are they basing it, where's that figure coming from?
Coming in, their, their estimates based on looking at our drawers, estimates on how many would be.
So they've seen the scope, they've come in and just said, okay.
Yeah. So I mean, it's, it's estimates, that's part of the problem of the planning on it.
Right.
Our archival information management solutions, they probably are cheaper. Their indexing would be done in China, I believe, if we went with them. They take part of the job and send it overseas to decrease the cost on it. The only problem that I'm finding with them is that they don't have a solution for new documents coming in. So if we scanned everything that we had here in-house, documents moving forward, unless we start scanning in everything that comes in the door, the board would end up with a mixture of scanned and unscanned documents kind of lumped in, and I'm not sure how they would be able to figure out what's been done and what hasn't. Centric Business Systems, they have great scanning capabilities and they have really good software, but I think the cost is going to be prohibitive. If it would cost us twenty thousand dollars to scan almost four hundred thousand documents, they want fifteen thousand dollars pretty much for their software scanning system, which I don't think we do enough scanning to justify spending that type of money. The last company that I've been speaking with is Laserfish Cloud Solution. Their proposal, like I said, has not been updated. It is still set at the five hundred thousand page mark. As soon as I get that, I will forward it on some board, but their software, the Laserfish package, I believe, is six or seven thousand dollars roughly, and that would allow us to have something moving forward, and their proposal would also help us take care of everything moving backwards.
Six or seven thousand dollars for the scanner system that we can use here?
I believe so, yes.
As far as the old paperwork, is there, did we ever discover what we have to retain and what we don't have to retain? I mean, are we wasting, is there potential to waste money on things that don't?
The documents will all need to be gone through before being sent for scanning, especially stuff that's up in archives, like the property folders, whatever's in there, we would definitely need, but the archive section, that's another project that has to be done before they can take those.
Maybe, maybe that's the, the first step right there, is to figure out, I mean, because we're trying to get estimates on stuff that we don't even know what we, they don't know, we don't know.
Even if we take care of something.
They're going to say right back to us, what do you want scanned, and we'll scan it. And we could waste potential money here on things that we don't need to scan. I think we talked about this once, like, get from Mike, the defined time of documents that need to be saved, and if we had to, just to save a little bit of money, just bring on someone, just for, have the temp agency just to help us for a month and just dump or destroy the stuff we do not have to retain anymore. And then that way, we have a better way to go into a quote, you know?
I think we need to clean, I think we'll clean up to know what we have and how far back we have and get rid of what we don't need to retain before we do any kind of scanning into electronic. That way, we're not wasting time scanning stuff we don't need to.
I mind.
So, I mean, these quotes are good to have, that give a general idea, but I think we need a better feel of what we actually have. I don't think we have that.
I mean, even if we clean up some of it, no one's going to come in here and start counting pages. Most of the companies basically say whatever, they do it by, this is what your page count was, this is what it is per document size, and they do it based on actual costs. They're just estimates.
But even just the data retention of some stuff that we don't need to retain, they have a problem for us. I mean, we just went through a server upgrade. I mean, could be throwing stuff on a server that we don't need to retain, you know, this sort of thing. What, what do we need to keep? I mean, some of those documents are probably quite old that just are taking up space that aren't needed to be retained quite along, so.
Yeah, that was, yeah, I had said that before as well. Then we need to clean it up and get a feel for what we have, and then, you know, move forward with, with the digital scanning, because getting them online is a good, good thing. I mean, we're doing the new ones at least, but getting the old stuff on, you know, is great as well, but I think we need to handle what we have first before moving forward on that.
Did Mike ever get back to the office on what the timeframe was for some?
There's a, there's a manual, this, that.
Depends on what type of document.
Depends on each individual document. Each one has to be gone over. You have to determine what type of document is based on that schedule for that specific item. So it's not, there's not a cheat sheet. There, it's literally a fifty-page manual.
That sounds like fun.
With the conditional use application, I put in your packets what is defined in our ordinance under zoning hearing board. My suggestion to the board in terms of costs would be to probably mimic in our ordinance what we have for the zoning hearing board costs. There's nothing in our ordinance that spells out anything regarding the expenditure of services and fees. So as it stands right now, conditional use, it's fifteen hundred dollars, and there's new kind of rules with it. I did see the P sets. For the conditional use hearing that we just went through, we are never allowed to charge legal fees. So even though that was the bulk of the conditional use, there would be no way to recover that. So our cost was kept in line. So our cost was kept in line, I guess, with the fifteen hundred.